This meeting is called to order. I will point out we did have a 6:30 executive session before this meeting. We have a legislative...
I would like to pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then we'll call this... Mrs. Elder?
Here.
Mr. Hauser?
Here.
Mrs. Cozart?
Here.
Mrs. Mays?
Here.
Mr. Muller?
Here.
Mr. Music?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Dr. George?
Here.
And Dr. Lachlan?
Here.
And hearing of visitors, part one. This is where anybody in the audience can come and speak of anything that's on the agenda. If you do come forward to the podium, state your name and your address. And then there is a place at the end of the meeting where you can speak of things that aren't on the agenda. Okay. I'll move for the adoption of resolution 132. Approval in minutes.
Seven.
It's been moved in seconded. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That vote passes unanimously. Solicitors report?
I don't want to make the same mistake as last year. No, no.
You kind of something on it.
They put me in the last?
Yeah. They put me in the last.
To the shed, man.
Yeah. Ethnology, man. Come on.
Make the thing move down the screen.
You're doing a great job.
I'm scrolling, man. You work for greater Latrobe.
I recommend you move on resolution 133, the appointment of Dr. Leonard to serve on the Greater Latrobe School Authority for a five-year period, ending December 31, 2016.
Second. Moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That vote passes unanimously. I do not have a legislator report, so Mrs. Mays, with education, please.
Thank you. I will move for adoption of resolution number 134 to approve voluntary participation in a teacher survey.
Seven.
Approved in seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That vote passes unanimously.
And I'm going to just swipe out on the curriculum committee and see, hey, Dr. Palmer's going to get an approval on that. I'll ask questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. Just a lot going on here as we approach the spring with curriculum pertaining to the scheduling process, as well as courses that will be offered for the upcoming school year. In the next few months, the board will have the opportunity to hear specifically pertaining to the courses from the teacher leaders of the departments to have approval for course additions and/or modifications. I'm happy to say that we have more courses or dual enrollment opportunities for our students. Our social studies department, as well as our family and consumer science department, has embraced this. And we will begin with our social studies department with Westmoreland County Community College and offering our students dual enrollment courses and a variety of courses in the social studies, including psychology, as well as current issues. Now, this is all dependent on teacher approval through WCCC, but we're very excited and optimistic that this is going to be a great opportunity for our students, along with additional courses being offered through CPO University as well. We also, with our family and consumer science department, are going to have the opportunity to work with Penn Technical College to offer our students dual enrollment through our child development/lifespan learning class. And again, this is in the process, but what's so exciting about this is it is free for our students to take that course. And if they take the child development course and deem that they choose to have the credit, they are granted that college credit provided if they meet the requirements by completion of the course. Some of the course changes that we will be proposing, and you may have heard about some of these in the past because we have had discussions about them the past few months, that next year all ninth graders will be taking biology. We will have an academic biology as well as a biology course, along with a lab for every section, and the lab will be offered on an every-other-day basis. This biology will take the place of our physical science course that the students have currently taken in ninth grade if they did not take the ninth-grade biology. We have also, with courses at the junior high school, opened up for our students taking algebra. We are firm believers here that two years is a great opportunity for our students to enroll in Algebra 1A in seventh grade and Algebra 1B and have algebra over two years so they have that strong foundation of algebra. However, looking at this a little bit closer, we're also going to provide the opportunity for students who excel and achieve and do a great job in their pre-algebra class in seventh grade to take Algebra 1 during their eighth-grade year and have a lab every other day with that to receive the additional instruction and/or support that they need. So then that way, students will have the opportunity to either take the Algebra 1A in seventh and Algebra 1B in eighth, and/or the pre-algebra in seventh and the Algebra 1 with a lab during their eighth-grade year so then they can continue that sequencing in their math. Along with that, we recently applied for grants through Project Lead the Way, basically from Chevron and Project Lead the Way, for a K-12 STEM initiative, which we're very excited. If receiving the grant monies, we look forward to offering courses in our elementary science curriculum, as well as our junior high school and our senior high school. We should be notified next week if we receive these grants. The grant application included $45,000 for our senior high school, $30,000 for the junior high school, as well as $20,000 for each elementary school. The senior high grant monies would be utilized over a three-year period, and the junior high and elementary monies would be utilized over a two-year period. So, very exciting, and it gives us an opportunity to again look at not just the K-12 STEM initiative, but an opportunity again for a career pathway for our students. We will also be bringing to the board in the next couple of months a few things pertaining to credits and the shifting of credits between physical education and health class in the ninth grade, which will be explained by Mr. Crellik in the upcoming months. We will also have seventh grade, excuse me, twelfth grade or secondary English courses, along with the students taking the fourth credits that the board policy has, having the students be able to choose from various options, but specifically having contemporary literature being involved in that senior high course offering as well, and counting as their fourth credit of the push. We continue those discussions about electives in all of our departments, but we have been focusing again with social studies as well as language arts. Along with the curriculum review cycle, it's always the textbook review cycle, and with the vision of the district and Mrs. Pines with the technology and embracing the BYOD, as well as the Chrome, Chromebooks that individuals have in our laptops, we are really working to gear toward online textbooks, as well as online resources and teachers' resources, and purchasing a class set of textbooks so there would be a class set of textbooks available for students, but with the philosophy and the vision of, hey, we're utilizing technology, all our students utilize technology in different ways, different levels at the buildings. And we will be bringing forth textbooks for approval again in the upcoming months in both our social studies curriculum, as well as our language. And I believe that's about it. And if anybody has any questions or specific questions pertaining to anything that was covered in the curriculum committee meeting this evening, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
That's the legislator's report. Same thing. The chair still has his head. Finances, Mrs. Al.
Thank you. I'm going to final resolution number 135, approving the treasurer's report, number 136, approving the king of bills, and number 137, approving the budgetary transfer, and move for their adoption.
Seven. Moved in seconded. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That vote passes unanimously.
Thank you. And having listened to this presentation last week, I think we're all ready to approve the local audit report, so I've moved for adoption of resolution number 138.
Moved in seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That vote passes unanimously.
And next on our agenda is resolution number 139. We have one resolution with the wording that was brought by the state that we have to adopt if we choose to live within the index, and I'll move for adoption of resolution number 139.
Seven.
It's been moved in seconded. Any comments?
There was an editor in favor this morning targeting you. You were talking about tribunes editor, the hate public education, although they made a misstatement, basically. They actually complimented our school district for trying to stay within the budget of Act 1 because our retirement payments were so high. But their misstatement was that the money was off for schoolteachers' retirement, is a direct correct, which is totally incorrect. This is for federal state retirement pension system, it's not just for schoolteachers. So everybody needs to understand that the local taxpayers are paying money out of their local taxes to support the state's pension system, not just the local schoolteacher's pension system, which raises it to a whole other level as far as our state legislature, our government, the link with the subsidies and the tax you've been helping our taxpayers out. So even though they gave us a pile of blacks, they kind of did it backhand way, so we have to understand what they're saying. And I can't believe that we can keep our budget so close as we do with all the discretionary spending. We really don't have any discretionary spending. Our discretionary spending is pretty much gone. But I compliment our staff for keeping the budget. I think it should be more all the time. All this argument, we should actually raise our taxes every year to keep things better and better. Support this resolution. That's all I have to say.
That's a good comment. I think a lot of people do not realize it's not just the teachers' retirement that goes towards.
I would like to add that what a lot of people don't understand here is that local school work has nothing to do with the pension system. Because when you're running for office, you often hear from people in the public, why do you allow those teachers to have such big pensions? Well, why do we allow state police to have such big pensions? Because it's the same system, basically. It's a system adopted by the state legislature, supposedly partly funded by the state legislature, which has totally let the side down on doing that funding. So this board has nothing to do with pensions for teachers. The teachers pay what they pay into the pension, which is what they're supposed to pay. We pay as prescribed by the state legislature, and it's a huck.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously.
I'll put together resolution number 142 to approve the energy procurement program and resolution number 141 to approve the electricity procurement program and move for their adoption.
Seven. It's been moved in seconded. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
And finally, the thinking which I hope will save us some money, I move for the adoption of resolution 142 to authorize the bond re-financing. And also, I ask the board members to take note of the estimated timeline, which is included in the resolution.
Seven.
It's been moved in seconded. Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously.
And the next finance committee meeting will be the first Wednesday in February 4th at 10:00 a.m. at the Avenue Building. Thank you.
Proprietary supplies, Mrs. Cozart?
Thank you, Mrs. Dr. Lachlan. I made for the adoption of resolution number 143, the permission to advertise for capital projects as a listed.
It's been moved in seconded. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And that passes H1.
Okay. I move for the adoption of resolution number 144 to approve the purchase and installation of security cameras at the grade located in junior and senior high schools.
Second. It's been moved in seconded. Any questions, comments?
No comment. We've had extensive discussions about this, and it's hard for me to vote against it because the actual motion says an amount not to exceed $360,000. I don't disagree with the security cameras. I don't disagree with them being necessary, but I do disagree with the number and the expense. So I can't vote against something that says it won't exceed a number because... I mean, I don't know what words are. I'm not very good at finding words sometimes. I'm rewinding myself if I'm supporting because I'm not against security. And although I understand what the reason is and things like that, you know, if these aren't people standing there, something bad's going to happen, it's going to happen, we're going to see it later, and it's going to happen. So it's a deterrent, that's one thing, but as far as beginning something, I don't think it's going to be ended. I just don't have a human being standing there watching the camera. I just think it's an excessive amount of cameras. I just think it's an excessive amount of money to spend. And for that reason, I'm opposed to it, but I can't oppose something that in theory is saying it won't exceed a number because I do agree we need security cameras. So I'm going to have to vote with it under protest. I don't know what else to do. I don't know what else to do. Somebody tell me what I should do. I don't know what else to vote. We voted yes and no. I can't abstain because I have all the information. I understand what we're voting on. Yeah, we need security cameras, of course. It's ridiculous. You know, but I think it's too much. And I think we've got to look at it again, and I'd like to see some other ways. I just understand this isn't a prison up here. This isn't a shop or a... I understand the need, but just came out here, I think we're spending too much money. I think we could use money. And this thing, there's a hundred thousand dollars less or something or something. You talk about this program here tonight, this Chevron program, or if you don't get it, what are we going to do? We're not going to happen. It's a wonderful program. And there's only hundreds of hundred thousand dollars we could use for something else. I, you know, that's all I'm saying. I don't understand the total amount, so I'm going to vote yes under protest.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That vote passes H1.
And move for the adoption of resolution number 145, permission to advertise supplies.
Moved in seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that vote passes unanimously.
And our next property supply meeting is Thursday, February 5th at 3:30 at Central Avenue. Building in that complete for adoption.
Senior nights, we have one tonight over in basketball for, who is basketball on charity, and our next one is hockey, January 26th, and we have swimming and wrestling coming up as well. That's all I have. Community relations, Dr. George?
As a resolution appoint to the regular Latrobe School District Parks and Recreation Committee, Mr. Fency, and he will serve as a school district representative on permission through December 31st, 2017, and this is reappointed.
Seven. Moved in seconded. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That vote passes unanimously.
No duty coming up Thursday, February 19th, and the Minister of Last Manager attached to the judge. That's all I got.
The intermediate unit, Mrs. Mays?
Thank you. We did not meet until December. Our next meeting will be next Tuesday, the 27th. EWC will be going on September 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. EWCTC, Mrs. Cozart?
Yeah, I have no report. Our next meeting is January 28th at 7:15 at the EWC.
Thank you. Board policy, Mrs. Al.
I have no report this evening, although we're planning a bidding for next month.
Okay. Transportation, Mr. Music?
I have the adoption of resolution number 147, so much of the needed transportation in Maryland.
Seven. It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that vote passes unanimously. Technology, Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Dr. Palmer. No report tonight on EWC, February 10th. Thank you.
Okay. And superintendent's recommendation?
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 148, which is the approval of the resignations listed.
Seven.
Moved in seconded. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That vote passes unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 149, which is the approval of the list of substitute teachers, including school nurses.
Seven. Seven.
Moved in seconded. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That vote passes unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 150, which is the support personnel appointments classified.
Seven. Seven.
It's been moved in seconded. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that vote passes unanimously as well.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 151. Here in the audience, it was added to the agenda, so I will read it. It is to approve an MOU, an agreement with Greater Latrobe Education Association, resolved that the Greater Latrobe Board of School Directors authorizes the solicitor and the appropriate administrators to take the necessary steps to prepare and conclude a memorandum of understanding and agreement with the Greater Latrobe Education Association with respect to appropriate educational level placement contingent on approval by the solicitor.
Seven. Seven.
It's been moved in seconded. Any comments? And because this is new and wasn't discussed before, are there any comments from the audience? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously.
And under other business, I would just like to take a moment to recognize the school board members this evening. January is school board recognition month. You have a whole month, and in front of you, you have a very small token of our appreciation. I'd just like to take an opportunity to thank you from my position, but also from the community. There are some very difficult decisions that school board members make. One, as such as tonight, Dr. George made a comment about school security and those kinds of decisions. They are very difficult, and I know that oftentimes decisions weigh heavily as far as making these decisions. And I certainly appreciate all of the time, energy, knowledge that all of you put into serving the Greater Latrobe School District, and obviously, there are students. So thank you very much. I know there is a certificate there as well that comes from PSBA, and the cupcakes are actually from our school food service department. So take them home and enjoy them. So thank you very much for your service. I appreciate it, as well as the community appreciation as well. Thank you. Good luck. You're welcome. Your board meeting dates are listed. February 10th through 17th are our two days in February, and March is March 10th and March 17th. And Mrs. Elder made, or Mrs. Cozart made note earlier of our JOC meeting, and that is our EWCTC monthly meeting, which three of our members of the board are represented on that board. That meeting is Wednesday, January 28th, next Wednesday at 7:15 p.m., which Mrs. Cozart gave mention. Thank you.
Now, hearing of visitors, part two, that's when you can come forward to the podium and speak on pretty much anything. So if you want to come up there, state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name's Paul Markham, and I'm actually an AmeriCorps member that currently serves in Bagley Elementary School. I do live in Union Township. I live up on Yepsom Ridge on 617 Solon Temple.
Could you keep your voice up just a little bit?
Sure. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, there's a lower.
Okay. Of course. I wanted to give a short report to the members of the school board, the administrators here, and the members of the community that are attendants tonight about our event that we held yesterday on Martin Luther King Day. Dr. King once said, "Everybody can be great because anybody can serve." You don't have to have a college degree to serve. You don't have to make your subject and verb agree to serve. You only need a heart full of grace and a soul generated by love. And not to diss Martin Luther King, but we do, in AmeriCorps, like to make our subjects and verbs agree. We're help students to do that. But we wanted to say that our local court, the Pennsylvania Mountain Service Court, planned a day of service to honor Martin Luther King Day and Martin Luther King's son, and his call for everyone to serve their communities, making it a day on instead of a day off. So we planned this event here at the CSC yesterday, and we called the community to come together and create a personalized hymn using a variety of party materials provided. Each hymn is placed around the words of Dr. King in the center of the mural. Our mural portrays quite possibly the most evident of Martin Luther King's causes, that of equality. Everyone is able to make the order. Anyone can be creative, no matter how they look or the abilities that they have. We are all human beings, unique, but have equal opportunities. We had a great turnout. Members of the community and attendants include adults, children, students of our district, and elders, individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities from the community and their staff members. And the mural is on display here. Many of you probably saw it when you came in. And it will be on display at various art venues in the future, which is still sort of in the planning stages right now. And lastly, on behalf of my fellow Pennsylvania Mountain Service Court members, I want to thank you all for your continued support of our efforts to make our school and community better.
Thank you for informing us of that. Anyone else?
That was a nice thing. You know, usually you people come out and talk, I just feel guilty about it. Thank you very much. I wouldn't.
I'm going to introduce you now, Scott Jackson, out of Andy Avenue Latrobe. I want to second what Mrs. Swire said. A lot of people don't realize this is an unpaid position, that you guys put in a lot of your personal time and do a fantastic job, and I appreciate you. I appreciate each and every one of you and the job you do for my school. Thank you. And here.
Thank you, sir.
Falling back. Let's grab right now before somebody else is like, "Poor him."
And for the adoption of resolution 152, approval. Moved in seconded. All those opposed? Say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, it's been a long day. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that passes unanimously. You are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.